Good evening. And I'd like to bring the regular evening meeting of the Township of Langley Council to order. And the first item on the agenda is to adopt and receive the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Fox, a secondar. Counselor Sparrow, all those in favor. Oh, Counselor Richter, sorry.
Yes, I wanted to ask, back in September, at our September 11th meeting, Counselor Davis had brought forward a request for a sort of a one-piece amendment to the Brookswood Fernrich OCP. And I don't see that specifically on the agenda here, and I'm wondering whereabouts on the agenda it will go.
Mr. Backen.
Your worship, I've got to open up the agenda here. It's under the section of... There we go. So it will appear under section M2. There's an item on today's distribution list that's a memo from Planning and Development that outlines the process going forth. And the basis of the referral that Counselor Davis asked to be considered was the basic will form the basis of Amendment 1 that'll be coming forth in the section when we discuss it under M2.
Thank you. Okay. So a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed and carried? Thank you. And the next item is to adopt the minutes of regular evening council meeting of October 2, the public hearing of September 12th, and the public hearing of October 2. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Fox, a secondar. Counselor Qualley, any errors or omissions? All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. And so now we move on to delegations. There are no presentations. We'll move straight on to delegations. And we have Norm Asen here and Doug Hadley. Oh, Norm? Okay, so, Mr. Hadley, I'll turn your mic on.
Your worship, councilors, on behalf of the Alder Grove Legion and the Langley Legion, we'd like to present the first poppy to the mayor with copies to the councilors. And as of your last meeting, you declared that tagging could take place from the 23rd of this month, and formal tagging will start on Friday, the 27th. Okay?
And I do want to remind everyone, Remembrance Day is coming, and there's services throughout the municipality. And also that November has been declared as Legion 265 month in honor of the legion which Mr. Hadley represents in Alder Grove. So, thank you. Horse people, horse people of B.C. You don't look like...
I kind of look like Sheila. So, am I right? It says the PowerPoint up here?
Sure, I'll let you get set up. And when you're all ready, just provide the clerk with your name, and then I'll start the timer for five minutes.
All right. I'm good to go. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Brian Harder. I'm the Chair of Backcountry Horsemen of British Columbia, the Alder Grove chapter. Most of you may know who we are, but some of you may not. The Backcountry Horsemen of B.C. are a province-wide group of trail-riding enthusiasts. We work with recreational groups, government agencies, and the general public to build new trails and trailheads, and to maintain and preserve existing trails, both wilderness and in the urban areas. As you know, we've been here before. The last time we were here was to thank you, the council, for finishing the second-to-last section of the South Langley Regional Trail. On the screen, we have it at the opening. We're here with Mayor Froze at the opening of the section of trail between 256 and 264. Now we're back asking council to approve the funds to complete the last small section of the South Langley Regional Trail. So this is a map from Campbell Valley Park to Alder Grove Regional Park. The South Langley Regional Trail runs between Campbell Valley Park, and it's in the Western Point, and travels eastward along the road easements and rightaways. The trail was actually begun back in 1995 and was envisioned to connect the two parks, the Campbell Valley Regional Park and Alder Grove Lake Regional Park. It was often referred to, this park, as a park-to-park connector. For many years, the trail ended at 256. In 2012, in 2012, Backcountry came as a delegate to town council, asking for approval of funds to survey and engineer the section from 256th Street to 264th to see if it was even feasible. Town council of the day said yes, and we thank you very much for that. After township engineers completed the survey and gave the go-ahead on the trail, council then approved the funds in 2013 for construction of the trail, and the real work began. Part of it was virtually impassable. True to our word, though, the Backcountry Horsemen of Alder Grove applied for grants and also supplied volunteers whenever and wherever we were able to help. In 2013, we received grants from Horse Council of B.C., Backcountry Horse Council of British Columbia, the provincial group, and $1,000 from our own chapter. In total, $11,600 in cash. We also supplied 621 hours of volunteer labor, most of that machine work. Our volunteer work on the trail was valued at over $34,000. That's a total value of $46,000 we've contributed to this trail already. We are a dedicated bunch, and this is just some of the work we did on the trail and the people that worked on the trail. Many Backcountry members have helped out on this. We don't mind getting our hands dirty. Here are some of the volunteers at work. We had a couple of excavators, several tractors, a quad, dump trailer, working on it. People were out there by hand with rakes and shovels. Every time we ride the trail, it's gratifying to see that it's so popular and well-used by joggers, hikers, dog walkers, cyclists, as well as horse riders. Unfortunately, the trail is still not quite complete. There's only a half a mile or less than a kilometer to go between 264th and 272nd. And we're constantly being asked, when will this last section finally be done? There's three aspects to this last section of the trail that actually the township doesn't have to pay for. At 264th and 8th Avenue, where the trail currently ends, an equestrian pedestrian crosswalk will be needed to be installed. We understand that this will be part of the 264th-to-the-border upgrade, and that, we understand that'll be covered by federal and provincial funding, and there's actually public consultation going on right now regarding that. The second half of the trail to the east, along 8th Avenue, goes alongside the new golf course. We've been told that as part of this, of their permit, they are obligated to build that part of the trail, and this part of the trail is actually usable right now. And again, that'll be paid for by the developer. At 272nd Street, where the trail enters Alder Grove Park, Metro Vancouver has committed to building a new trail from the corner of 8th Avenue down to the existing horse-trailer marking. All that remains of the township is to find us less than a kilometer of our time. So to wrap up, we're here tonight to ask council to approve funding to finally complete the South Langley Regional Trail. We are asking for you to include in the $1,000, or $100,000 in the next two years into the park's capital budget dedicated to finishing the trail. The Backcountry Horsemen of B.C., Alder Grove commits to raise $7,500 in each of those years for a total of $15,000 towards that budget. We will also commit to supplying volunteer where and when permitted. We're asking township to approve the funds to finish this trail, and we will commit to participating with it. We've enjoyed working with the township in the past and look forward to more in the future. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. And there are some questions from council. And I do want to thank you for all the work that you've done on behalf of council. It's really gratifying to see the community come together and just share with the municipality on their needs and get in there. And like you say, you're not afraid to get your hands dirty, and I really do appreciate all the work that you and all the volunteers do. I'll put Counselor Fox on. He has a question. Counselor Fox?
Thanks, and thanks for coming. I don't like you coming and telling people about our South Langley gym. This is a most amazing trail, actually, right through the, from Campbell Valley. And I think that it's one of the best-kept secrets of our community. But, yes, you're correct, we do need to finish the trail, and it's been on the books for a long time. I was interested in what you said about the 264th crossing, because that's an expensive crossing, and if the provincial government's going to pay for it, that's a huge bonus, because it's just not a, it's not a pedestrian crossing, it's a horse pedestrian crossing. So have you got the commitment from them?
No. What we understand with talking with township staff, that it's on the agenda with them, with the province and the federal upgrade, it should be covered there.
Okay. So, because the Highway 13 upgrade is supposed to start fairly soon, and that would be a huge asset and commitment on their part. You folks in that section, the 256 section to 264th, were very successful in getting other partnership grants.
Right.
Are you looking at that now?
Yes. We've already written letters and gotten confirmation, I believe they're in the council's package, that we've got confirmation from both provincial and horse council, again, that they support the project. We don't have the final commitments, because we have to do in the calendar year, but we expect to do that, and anything we're short, we'll go raise the funds ourselves.
Okay. And one face at the very back there is very familiar. I guess he's left the lower mainland country and moved up country, has he?
He has, but he's still a chapter member. And if I need to bring him back for enforcement, I can do that.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Good job.
Thank you. And I believe October 25th, there's an open house consultation for that strip of highway that the province is putting on. Mr. Seffy, where is that going to be held? Do you know?
Poppy Golf St.
Oh, at the Poppy Golf Course? The Poppy Golf Course? Yeah. Okay, so October 25th?
And we'll be there.
And you'll be there? Good. Excellent. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For your presentation. All right. So we now move on to reports to council. And there's a development permit application number 100687. That's the Auto Farm and Home Cooperative at 24795. Okay? Thank you. And Counselor Fox, from the leave?
Second.
Counselor Davis moves, and Counselor Long seconds it. Is there any discussion regarding, oh, sorry, at this time, I have to ask for submissions from the public regarding development permit number 100687? And for third-time submissions from the public regarding development permit 100687?
That was the second time.
I don't know. I'm way ahead of myself. And for the, not the third, third time, but I missed the second. Okay, one more time. Submissions from the public regarding development permit 100687. Seeing none, then I would ask if council has any questions or concerns they would like to raise. Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote for E1. And, okay, I'm going to cancel the vote, and I've got to put Counselor Fox absent. Just bear with me. Okay. Now I'll call the vote. Okay, if you please vote again. Thank you, council. And the motion carries unanimously. Okay, if you want to ask Counselor Fox to come back in. Okay, so now we move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading. G1 is Public Safety Radio Building Amplification System, bylaw 5319. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Sparrow moves it. Counselor Davis seconds it. Any discussion, questions on G1? Ah, yes, here we go. Counselor Fox?
Well, thank you very much. This is a really important piece of a process, I think, that's going to move forward with the new 700-megahertz radios, which will significantly improve not only the communication between our service providers, our public service, safety service providers, but also it will make their jobs safer on a day-to-day basis. The radio system that's presently in use is pretty compromised in a lot of ways. It was good for its day, but it stays long since gone. This particular scenario with the 700-megahertz radios coming onboard, which will be not too distant future, early in the next year, will be a great step forward, and I think that this is an absolute necessary step in that process of getting those onboard. And we're working very closely with ECOM 911 to do this, which is the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. I concur with that. I just had a question through you, your worship, to staff. Do we have any idea about the approximate cost? Is there sort of a ballpark for this? And is this strictly borne by the owners of the property for the installation and the cost of the actual unit?
Your worship, the costing of the actual unit within the buildings is to be borne by the property owners themselves. It'll be part of a regime that will set up as part of our building process. Our costs will be limited to our existing or ongoing costs for setting up the radio information system as it is, so the incremental cost to us won't be affected by the change.
And the cost is not too substantial for the property owner themselves?
It ought not to be, but it depends very much on the design of the building. The design of the building can minimize or maximize the need for amplification.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Quick question. Do we know how many buildings there is in the township? And how, what length of time will it take to kind of get it all figured out?
Our focus is not on retrofitting existing buildings, it's to actually go forward with new buildings, with the exception being township buildings that will be retrofitting as resources permit.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Long?
That was the question I was going to ask. Thanks, your worship. And so we're going to retrofit all of the township buildings and any new buildings moving forward. Will there be an opportunity to retrofit other buildings that are existing now?
Part of the renovation process that may come up and be required, but we wouldn't be seeking to do it on a mandatory basis. The building is remaining as it is.
But on a volunteer basis, building owners can come forward, and I guess we should be encouraging that, of course.
Yes, they could.
Thanks, your worship.
Okay, any further discussion on G1? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. It carries unanimously. And move on to G2. And that 64th Avenue and 224th Street Water Local Area Service Construction Bylaw Amendment, bylaw number 5238. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Davis. Counselor Long seconds. Any discussion on G2? Counselor Davis?
Just a quick question on, so it's, the price has gone up, $1.8 million, and I guess my question would, was, how do we, directional drilling costs increase? There's four items here that have made it go up. Are they all basically the same, or are we going to, where would the cost be? $1.8 million's a lot of money. And I'm just, it says here, construction market, the de-watering requirements to complete it, additional restoration costs for the street works. But I'm just wondering, what actually bears the brunt of $1.8 million? Just a question.
Mr. Seffy?
Your worship, the previous estimate was prepared without the benefit of a detailed design. Having completed the detailed design process, having gone through that process, we are much more confident and comfortable with the number in terms of where most of the additional cost of $1.8 million has gone to. I would suggest it's the depth of the pipe and the de-watering, as well as the fact that we have to deal with the utility company. So it's really all of those, those design elements that we were not aware of prior to the detailed design being completed.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on G2. And that carries with Counsel Arneson opposed. And move on to bylaws for consideration at third reading. And H1 is resoning application 100472, development permit application 100852, and bylaw 5312, Yorkson Medical Limited. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Qualley, seconded by Counselor Sparrow. Any discussion on H1? Seeing none, I'll call the question. It carries unanimously. We want to H2. This is Murrayville Community Plan Amendment and Resoning Application Number 100141, Development Permit Application 100857, bylaw 5310, and bylaw 5311, Zentara at 4800 Block of 221 Street. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Qualley. Counselor Long seconds. And so it's on the floor, oops, Counselor Qualley, there you go, you're on.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to add a condition to the permit, and the condition is that construction activity shouldn't have a negative impact on the residents. So please, could we add a condition that the applicant be required to secure off-road parking for construction vehicles?
Okay, so that's an amendment, add a condition. Is there a secondar to that? Counselor Sparrow? So I'll open up Amendment 1. Does anybody wish to speak to that? Counselor Long?
Well, your worship, would we need to be doing that? I mean, certainly, we've had many construction projects all around the township at all times, so maybe staff can explain if this is going to help for the council to get to this level of requirement?
Mr. Seffy?
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. This is a fairly significant project, your worship, with likely a number of phases, likely taking over a lengthy period of time, I would imagine more than a year, and involving and employing a number of crews and various top contractors and trades that will be employed and working on the site, given the limitations with on-street parking, with the proximity to various public and civic institutions, including the hospital on the north side of Fraser Highway. There are, as council heard during the public hearing, some parking limitations, so I think the amendment is certainly workable.
So just to expand on that, so, your worship, I guess then what staff would ask the opponent to rent a lot somewhere and arrange shuttles or something, or find some way that the workers don't park in and around the project? Is that what we're getting to?
Well, your worship, as I was listening to the amendment by Counselor Qualley, I was thinking onsite. I think the wording was off-road. So I think as long as they stay off the road, they can dedicate a certain portion of the site, their own site, so they don't have to worry about shuttling.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Richter?
I'm just curious where off-site parking would be in that area, because it's pretty well-packed with parking right now. Where would they get off-site parking?
It's off-road.
It's off-road. So they could park on the site itself, or at another location, which they could then shuttle or walk to the site. But it's not saying off-site. They can park on the site, the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sparrow?
Yeah, I just, I, to clarify that, I think the intent of the motion, or the motion, as I understood it, was that they would be not parking on the street. They would be having to be accommodated on their site, and I think the proximity to the parking lot at the Blair Recreation Center, as well as the school bed office and our C&amp;P parking lots there, I think it's important that we ensure that we're not having construction crews using those parking facilities to park, and that they accommodate them within their own site is important, so I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Counselor Qualley?
Oh, thanks, I'm good now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on H2. I'm sorry, on the amendment, on the amendment only? Thank you. And that carries with Counsel Richter opposed. So now we're back to the motion as amended, and Counsel Qualley?
So I'd like to just get clarification perhaps from you, Mayor Froze, or through you to staff. I would like to make a motion that, based on input from the public hearing, this isn't necessarily related to the application, but I'd like them to be concurrent, that we work to implement some time-limited parking in the township-owned parking spaces as part of our capital plan currently in progress for commencement of construction later this year. So do you want that now, or in new business?
I'll ask Mr. Backen, I believe that could be a standalone motion in other business regarding parking in the area, rather than attaching it as an amendment to the...
That's correct, your worship. It's not strictly dealing with the application, it's dealing with the other parking issues in the area, and I understand that to be focusing on limiting the time or duration of parking.
So just for clarification, do you need a notice of motion, or can that come back as new business?
It can come into other business if it's significant policy change, perhaps a notice of motion, and then it can come back the next meeting.
Sure.
And otherwise, it's up to council if they wish it to be on the floor at the time, so.
Okay, so...
I don't think it's time-sensitive, so we could do it as a notice of motion.
That's fine.
And then come back, okay?
Thank you. I just wanted to address the issues of the public hearing around that, so thank you.
Thanks. All right, I see no further discussion, so I'm going to call the question on H2 as amended. And that carries with Counsel Richter and Counsel Arneson opposed. So now we move on to bylaws for third reading and final adoption. Okay, third reading and final adoption. This is I1, Land Use Contract Discharge Application Number 100485. It's Candola, it's 2710527B Street or Avenue, bylaw 5307. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Davis, seconded by Counselor Qualley. Discussion on I1. Counselor Richter?
I noticed we did receive some correspondence with regards to negative impact on adjoining properties by allowing a two-story building in there as opposed to the current rancher style. And I'm just wondering, through you to staff, if there's any way that we could try to work around the light being blocked on neighboring properties from a building that's taller than the other buildings in the area?
So, Mr. Seffy, maybe you can help clarify. I believe it's the height that's changed from the land use contract to the new zoning. It's a little bit different, but I believe you can still allow to build two-story houses on the old...
That's correct, your worship. The land use contract and the zoning bylaw essentially mirror each other, there are, for the most part. There are no requirements, there are no limitations with respect to height based on the land use contract. In other words, if the owner of the existing land use contract wanted to demolish the existing building and build a two-story house, they could do that. So the zoning bylaw, the conversion of the land use contract to the zoning bylaw does not impose any additional, or does not retract from any current provisions with respect to height.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or discussion on I1? Seeing none, I'll call the question. And that carries with Counsel Richter opposed. Move to bylaws for final adoption. And J1 is the 2017 Amendments to the Permissive Tax Exemption Bylaw, bylaw number 5314. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Arneson, seconded by Counselor Fox. Any discussion on J1? Seeing none, call the question. And that carries unanimously. And now we rocket to Mayor and council report. And so, just bear with me. First of all, welcome everyone here tonight, and I'd like to start off by just remembering our colleagues in Fernie, British Columbia, and sending our deepest sympathies to them when they suffered such a great loss last week. And two municipal employees and one contractor died in an unfortunate incident at their ice arena. The names are Wayne Hornquist, Lloyd Smith, and Jason Podlaski. So they passed away during an unforeseen ammonia leak at the local arena. So our thoughts and prayers are with the families and the community in mourning. So with that, I'd just like to welcome everyone here, and I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving and a few weeks off, and spent time with their family and friends. On Wednesday, October 4th, was a Sustainability Breakfast, Regional Growth Trends and Strategies, hosted by Metro Vancouver at Quantlin Polytechnic University in Langley. The recently released results from the 2016 census provided a benchmark for measuring and interpreting how growth is shaping our region. Metro Vancouver's Regional Growth Strategy, in collaboration with municipal official community plans, is an agreement amongst member municipalities that anticipates growth and establishes goals and strategies to plan for another 1 million residents over the next 25 years in Metro Vancouver. Our very own Jason Chu, manager of Long Range Planning, was on the panel, and he helped answer questions about growth and planning involved to accommodate an influx of population over the next several years. From housing and transportation, employment and recreation opportunities, to looking after our environment, there is a lot to consider. On Friday, October 6th, was a tour of the Langley Regional Airport, where Guy Miller, the airport manager, provided staff and council with a tour of the new leased space along 56th Avenue. Changes are underway at our Langley Regional Airport with the development... Changes are underway at our Langley Regional Airport with the development of a new office tower, expansion of our hangar capacity, road and street lighting improvements, and Vector's new 104,000-square-foot building opening in the near future. And that's 200 employees coming to the airport. In the rotary wing business, helicopters come from all over the world to be serviced and reconditioned at Vector, and certainly a great asset. And they're just getting, as you can see in the picture on the left, just getting on the way in setting up that fantastic facility. Langley Regional Airport is recognized as the second-largest concentration of rotary wing heli aircraft in Canada. On Saturday, October 7th, was the Annual Cranberry Festival. You see Councillor Long, an expert pancake flipper.
Look at the color of it.
It's perfect. Did you borrow that one from my station, or is that your own? Okay, excellent. Mine were all burned, raw on the inside, black on the outside. Thousands of people toured Fort Langley community, and Glover Road was filled with local vendors providing an array of goods, unique gifts and food. Councillor Long, Councillor Whitmarsh, and I helped serve pancakes at the annual free breakfast located at Lee's Grocery. And I know this is a big event for the BIA, and thank you to all the volunteers who put this very successful event on. And I saw a stack of full totes of cranberries at the beginning, and I saw them all empty at the end, so hopefully it was all successful. On Thursday, October 12th, was the Annual UDI, that's Urban Development Institute, Mayor's Panel at the Langley Vent Centre. Mayor Sharon Gates of Chilliwack, Mayor Henry Braun of Abbisford, Mayor Nicole Reed of Maple Ridge, Mayor Ted Schaefer from the city of Langley, Mayor Randy Hawes of Mission, and Councillor Bruce Hayne, who's acting mayor of Surrey, and I answered several questions around development within our communities and creating communities that are as diverse as our residents. There's a record attendance this year, with 220 registered, and a great opportunity. Friday, October 13th, was the 23rd Annual Langley Prayer Breakfast. I'd like to thank Councillor Whitmarsh for taking over the speaking portion as I had to leave for a meeting in New Westminster. The guest speaker was Barth Nederfield, astrophysicist in the Department of Astronomy and the Department of Physics at the University of Toronto. On Saturday, October 14th, was a celebration of life for Mr. Hugh Davis, Councillor Davis' father. It was an amazing service for a remarkable pioneer of Langley, and I'm sure you're very proud, as we, as the community are, very proud of your dad and for what he did for this community during his 93 years. And certainly was well-attended, must have been 500, 600 people in that gym, if not more.
700.
700, okay, that was amazing.
And Kevin, you're sitting in his chair.
There you go.
Did the fire marshal know there were seven?
The fire marshal was there. They were probably, they were there. No. So that evening was also the buyer's appreciation banquet for the 4-H Club, Langley 4-H Club. And the dinner took place at Harmsworth Hall, and I was very pleased to attend. I'd like to thank Cassie Sarr, from whom I purchased, actually, they got the picture of Langley, but Cassie sold me her beef, half of her beef, which I split with Lep's Market in Abbisford. And ended up getting a couple of hugs there, too. So it's a great opportunity to support our youth, and they use that money towards their education, a lot of things that they do, and it supports 4-H. And it was really nice to be there and see those young people so dedicated to furthering agriculture in our community. Monday, October 16th, I was pleased to attend a special event hosted by Envision Financial. I had the opportunity to meet Envision President David Lanfair, along with several guests. This was a 90-minute question-answer period where local businesses and volunteer organizations could ask questions about local government policy and direction, social issues facing our community, homelessness, and affordable housing, just to name a few of the issues that came up. That's not us, that's another group. Lot younger group, yeah. Thursday, October 19th, I attended the Public Open House for a proposed development called The Village, which was hosted at the George Preston Recreation Centre. Touted as the first of its kind in Western Canada, The Village is anticipated to open in Brookswood in early 2019. Based on the dementia village model first established in Europe and backed by years of evidence-based research, The Village will be Metro Vancouver's first private memory care village. The Village's residents will live in their own homes with one of six single-story cottages situated on a nearly seven-acre site where the former Bradshaw Elementary School is located. And it's great to see this innovation come in to look after our seniors who have dementia and Alzheimer's. This has worked very well in Europe, apparently, so it'd be good to see that here. On Friday, October 20th, I was fortunate enough to tour the Pacific Riding for Developing Abilities located in South Langley. PRDA was established in 1973 to provide therapeutic horseback riding to individuals with physical, cognitive, and emotional disabilities. For over 39 years, they've been giving youth and adults with varying disabilities the chance to bond with horses, make lasting friendships, have fun, and receive therapy at the same time. And I spent two hours there, had a fantastic tour, and it's just amazing what they can do with people. They take these young people from wheelchair to walking just by working with horses, riding horses, and it builds their physical health, and it builds their confidence, and it's just amazing what they do there. I was extremely impressed. And there's not a picture here, but I made good friends with a horse named Alex. On Sunday, October 22nd, was the Annual Willoughby Hall Dinner. Money's raised, go to the improvements of the hall. And I see Alice there. And it was a great dinner, it was sold out, and had a great time there last night. So a week ago, Mr. Sethi and I had an opportunity to meet with Minister Lana Popham, Minister of Agriculture, and Minister Clara Trevina, Minister of Transportation, where we discussed issues concerning the township, which included our 1997 Order and Council Regulation and with a path towards deregulation, our 2016 Executed Memorandum of Understanding with the Agricultural Land Commission, and transportation. We talked about the 216th interchange, the current status and the funding arrangement, and some of the projects that we're doing there, along with the 216th and Highway 10, some of the future upgrades that are needed. And we also talked about the 232 Street Exchange at Highway 1 widening to 264th, which is extremely important to our region and to our residents, and Highway 13th widening, which is a temporary, they have temporary works right now on 264th related to the new Alderfield Border Crossing. And there's an open house, as we mentioned earlier, on October 25th at D W P Poppy regarding that piece. So very heartening to hear from the Minister of Transportation and from their staff that all of these projects are still being looked at and under review. Highway 13th is moving ahead, 216th to 264th widening, they're reviewing. And my job was to help them with the review, as it's important to our region. So had a couple of very good meetings, and it's great because it's a brand-new government, and to be able to sit down with the minister and the staff to just brief them on where our council's been going over the last 20 years on some of these large issues. So we've got some upcoming events. Thursday, October 26th, the Chamber of Commerce Business Excellence Awards will be happening again, so there'll be a lot of great businesses and individuals in our community receiving awards. On Wednesday, November 1st, Metro Zero Waste Conference, which will be held in Vancouver. Councillor Long, are you going to that?
I'll be there.
Good, so will I. Thursday, November 2, is the Fraser Valley Commercial Building Awards. And on Saturday, November 4th, the Langley Animal Protection Society Annual Gala. So with that, I would ask if any member of council has anything to add on what they've got coming up, or have they done? Councillor Arneson?
Oh, thank you, Worship. Just something briefly that I wanted to share. It's about Duwali, so there was a wonderful celebration. I don't think we have any photos.
The slide, oh, there it is.
Oh, is there? Oh, okay, all right, there they are in action. Really incredible dancers. It was a very nice event, and as always, it was the 14th annual event, so you can see that there are a number of dignitaries there. So it was very special, about 500 people showed up, had a lot of fun, ate a lot of samosas, got their faces painted, et cetera. So I just really wanted to thank the FERL and Sarwan Randewa in particular. And you can see Bob Long was there, and John Aldag, Rosemary Wallace, and Councillor Stortebum from the city of Langley. So just wanted to share that with you.
You don't have a picture of you dancing there, though?
That was last year.
Oh, that was last, okay.
Too many samosas.
Too many samosas, so I had to...
No.
Okay, so with that...
I donated.
I'll get that clear. Oh, and one more thing I'd like to add, I almost forgot. Received a letter to the Township of Langley Fire Department, and I just want to mention, it was from the Minister of Agriculture Lana Popham, where she extended the sincere appreciation to the firefighters of the Langley Township Fire Department for the courageous and valiant service during their deployment to the BC wildfire crisis of 2017. And she goes on to say, "Many of you have departed your own homes to help save the homes and livelihoods of your fellow citizens of British Columbia, leaving your family and friends to fight wildfires that have been described to me as nothing less than menacing in magnitude. I've heard stories of tremendous ordeal and suffering that you and your fellow platoons likely encountered directly and no doubt found distressing. Your bravery is apparent, and your willingness to face the worst wildfire season this province has on record head-on. The agriculture sector in British Columbia has a diverse range of commodities that depend on the infrastructure, crops, animals, and people that enable the sector to prosper and thrive. Please accept my heartfelt gratitude for exemplary service and every effort made by each firefighter to extinguish the fires that threatened and continue to threaten, at the time of the writing here, the viability of our industry." So great letter from the Minister of Agriculture to our Township Fire Department, and please pass our thanks again for all the work that they did. So with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Lots of pages. Anything from Metro Vancouver?
Well, you mentioned the zero waste.
Zero waste, okay, so, okay. And Councillor Fox said you have something? Or no? Okay.
Just that, right now, we're going through the budget process. We had council councils on Saturday, a number of us were there. We've attended, the process has gone through committee, went to the board last Friday, then went to council councils on Saturday, which is an opportunity for all councillors from all the different regions and municipalities of Metro Vancouver. So right now, everybody's focused on budget, which we haven't started quite yet, but we will be shortly here, so it's... And the one thing I will say is, I did attend a conference in Chicago on, and don't get me wrong here, it's what goes out the toilet. It was a conference about what happens when you flush the toilet. Most of us don't think about it, we just flush the toilet. But it was all about that. 28,000 people in Chicago, from all over the continent, and even Europe and South America, attending this, and it was very, very interesting. I spent most of my time learning about what different jurisdictions are doing with biosolids, and how they're treating biosolids and dealing with the issues of getting away from it. I must admit to Mr. Mayor, the last time I used the periodic table was in grade 12, which was 1968. I got into a couple of sessions that were way over my head, because there was a couple of scientists there talking, and the formulas were flying pretty fast and furious. But I stood there and tried to figure out what those little numbers meant. I know pH is, it was, but I don't know much. H2O, I still know that and a few others, but it was very fascinating, and it's certainly an issue that every single region across our nation in the United States is dealing with, and how to do it, meet regulations, and deal with the end product, shall we say. I'm looking at Brian over there, we don't deal with those things in South Langley because we have our own septic tanks, but certainly it's a big issue in metropolitan areas.
Good, thank you. Sounds interesting.
No, yeah. Great city, but...
A windy city. We'll go there. Okay, so now we're going to move on to M, Items from Prior Meetings, Brookswood Furnish Community Plan. And I'm just going to read the first little bit, and I'm going to turn it over to staff. This recommendation is a presentation by staff regarding the input received at the public hearing and potential amendments for council's consideration. This item was a subject of reconsideration at the Special Meeting of Township Council on July 17, 2017, and during the meeting, the item was referred to as Special Meeting of Township Council for the purposes of public hearing, which occurred on September 12, 2017. And also, just the time delay to get it to this meeting was a desire of council that a full council should be in attendance to deal with this. And today, we have a full council, as Councillor Fox alluded to, he was at a conference, I was at a conference, and Councillor Richter was at a conference, so we finally all got back together again, and we can deal with this very important bylaw. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sethi, and to start this off, and just, or do you want to go direct to Mr. Sethi? To Mr. Backen? All right, it's going to go to Mr. Backen, and then to Mr. Sethi.
That's correct, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Thank you. I thought it'd be appropriate that I started following Councillor Fox's reminiscence of Chicago, so I suppose that's the honour of being in this speaker's position. I have to set the scene a little bit, because what we're doing is procedurally very complex, but will be worked through with your patience. There is nothing impossible about this, but it's a unique situation. Just to recap a little bit, where we stand right now is, we have a proposed bylaw before you, as you referenced, that goes back somewhat. There was a public hearing on this bylaw, it was defeated. There was then a motion to reconsider, which was passed, following the successful passage of the reconsideration motion. There was then a motion to defer it till we had a full council. At that time, sorry, as part of that process, we then decided to have another public hearing, and then it was tasked with staff to go back and try to put together the pieces of that process, and that involved hearing from the public, and of course, hearing from council as the matter moved forward. The technical position we are in right now is that we have a bylaw that has amendments associated with it that was technically defeated, but has been resurrected, if you will, and that makes it a bit of a challenge, because the bylaw we seek to have processed here this evening is a bylaw that has been amended, but it has not been formally adopted by any means. So as a consequence, the motion to reconsider must be then of the original bylaw as amended. And we start with that, because that takes a number of the pages of the agenda out of play. These were amendments previously endorsed by council. From that, then, we've tried to actually work, and Mr. Sethi will go into this in some detail, tried to work through the issues that arose, and we have four rough groupings of these issues. And the first grouping is really the need for neighborhood plans, if there is in fact going to be a successful bylaw, and the dealing with future applications, those being applications after October 23rd. There's been some concern to make sure that those are disclosed and brought forward upfront, so that there's no confusion as to how the plan is disposed of, whatever that may be, because that will remain in council's unfettered discretion. Then we have a number of supplemental, a number of concepts that were put forth, in fact, were the subject matter that Councillor Davis referred to this meeting, and we've kind of grouped those into a number that are supportable and a number that are problematic. And that's what Mr. Sethi will be taking us through momentarily. As well, we have a section dealing with applications in terms of pre-October 23, 217, because we're actually partway through this process, and the last attempt at this was in July. We're suggesting some way of disposing of those applications, recognizing the process to date. And a last section on watercourses, it's relatively minor, but remains one of the four topics that we're going to focus on here today. So with your indulgence, after hearing that long procedural introduction, Mr. Sethi can now begin to take us through the four categories, so council at the end of this can consider in terms of how they wish to proceed.
I just have one clarification, the reconsideration, well, there's two ways to bring a reconsideration back. One is by motion, and the other is by, under the community charter, the mayor can. So just to be clear, it wasn't by motion, it was by the authority under the community charter from the mayor to bring this back for reconsideration. So just want to make sure that's clear. Mr. Sethi?
Thank you, Worship. The presentation, as you have referenced, Your Worship, is intended to provide council with a summary of the input received at the two public hearings held for the Brookswood Furnish Community Plan update. As part of this presentation, which is, by the way, accompanied by a memorandum which was distributed to council as part of the package today, item three, as part of this, we will review the amendments that were previously approved by council, as well as the amendments that were put forward by Councillor Davis and forwarded by council to the process as part of the September 11th meeting of council. And we will have some staff recommendations for council to consider as well. So, Your Worship, to begin with, we thought it would be wise to just refamiliarize council and the public with what we heard during the two public hearings that were held, the first one on June 27th. Approximately 450 people attended the first public hearing. We received 53 verbal submissions, which included 43 unique speakers, with 10 of those speakers speaking twice. 98 written submissions were received, for a total combined submission of 151. Many of the submissions did not outright support or object to the proposed plan, but rather expressed concerns for some aspect of the plan or some of the policies contained in the plan. Of those that did provide more definitive statements of support or objection, 22 submissions provided support for the plan, and 17 expressed opposition. The 151 submissions received were collated and sorted into 25 comments or comment themes. Each of the themes included a reference of the number of times that the topic was mentioned. As you can see on the screen there, for example, number one, the most referenced topic was the overall plan, with 51 references. At the September 12th public hearing, the second public hearing held on September 12th, we had 500 people attend, approximately 500 people attend, 60 verbal submissions... we had 500 people attend, approximately 500 people attend, 60 verbal submissions, and 58 unique speakers, with two people speaking twice. 152 written submissions were provided, for a combined total of 212 submissions. Compared to the submissions received at the first public hearing, many people provided an outright support or objection to the proposed plan. Of those that did do, did submit outright submission, outright opposition or support, we had 65 indicate support, with 70 expressing opposition. The 212 submissions received have been collated, similar to the previous public hearing summary, with respect to the number of times that each theme was developed, and a number of references to each one.
Sure. Councillor Richter?
Yes, I was just wondering, I know water came up. Which category has water been put in, like the Aquifer Water Table and so on?
That would be the environmental...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, what we did, your worship, was we put the two public hearing summaries together to give council and the public an overall total, total snapshot or view of, of what we heard. And the results are on the screen. As you can see, the 113 was the total number of verbal submissions received, 250 was the total number of written submissions received, for a total combined submissions of 363. And interestingly enough, your worship, no surprises, I guess, for those keeping count, overall, we had 87 expressing outright support, for 87 expressing outright opposition. Now, your worship, I will move on to amendments that were previously considered and approved by council. The following two slides reference those amendments. With staff comments in the, the last column to the right, in terms of the impact, if any, of those amendments. And there were 12 of these, and council will recall that there were many more that council did consider. In fact, there were 28 amendments considered by council, 16 of which did not pass, but we did have 12 of them that were passed by council. So then, moving on, your worship, a resolution for council to consider, consider with respect to future neighbour plans, as alluded to by Mr. Bakken. To provide some clarity and certainty around this topic of neighbour plans, it was a topic that came up during the, the public hearings, in terms of the, the lack of certainty, or desire for more certainty, if you will. So, the recommendation that staff put forward for council to consider is that council set aside $500,000 as part of 2018 budget for preparation, for commencement of, of neighbour plans in the Brookswood Furnish area. Just to note, your worship, the, if the recommendation was to be approved by council, just a reminder that the costs are always recoverable through subsequent development, application, processing fees that are charged pursuant to past practice, and, and that's what we've done in the past. In terms of amendments being proposed and, and put forward for council to consider at this stage, your worship, as, again, as Mr. Bakken introduced, there are three amendments. The first one is fairly significant, and I guess overarching, in terms of its scope, because it talks about text amendments and language amendments throughout the document, throughout the community plan document. And we have divided these into two groups, if you will, part A, those that are supportable from staff perspective, and part B, problematic. And I will explain why, based on, I guess, the specifics of, of each one of the amendments being considered. Mostly to do with, with the hierarchy of plans, mostly to do with past practice, consistency, best industry approaches, and, and future implications, just to generalise the, the commentary. So, beginning with the supportable group, part A, recommendations, and the text has been taken verbatim from the document that was put forward by councillor Davis, and introduced to council, so that the language has not been changed. And what we've tried to do is colour code, if you will, the text and the staff position with respect to each one of the amendments going forward. So, the green, for the most part, indicates staff support, or supportable, and the red is something that is problematic. This one is the, the first one in the supportable category, however, I would like to suggest that it be amended somewhat, and we're calling it amendment, an amended amendment, if you will. The, the language that was put forward in the, in the document talks about adding a definition to the, to the document that we have, to the plan. Because there are no other definitions being provided, and the, the community plan is actually a series of policy documents, a series of policies, if you will. What staff is recommending is, rather than a definition, we actually introduce these two topics, the ones, the first paragraph and the second paragraph, paragraph, as new paragraphs seven and eight, under section 3.4, that's a relevant section in the, in the, in the plan. So, the first one to do with open spaces, and the second one to do with natural spaces, staff recommend that they be accepted as amendments going forward, but not as definitions, but rather as, as new policies under section 3.4. Your worship, just to remind council, the entire document as revised, not with these amendments, because these are proposed, but as revised based on council's previous direction, is included in the council package under M2, for those who wish to, to follow. Moving on, the, the language here is to amend the urban wildlife habitat, habitat section, to amend the language from consider to ensure, and staff support that. In the following page, in this page, on this slide, we have sections to do with the phasing and guidelines regarding site design. There are six instances of the word should appearing, which were recommended to be changed to shall, and staff feel that they are okay to proceed with, and no objections there. Moving on to section 9.2, and again, 10.1, guidelines, under the sections, or the, the headings, justification and intent, we have altogether, again, six references in the, the shoulds to shall, and we have two instances where we have recommendation to change the word encourage with the word ensure, and add the words where possible in one of those cases, and staff, again, have no objections to that. Replacing, again, a number of shoulds with the word shall, in the guidelines, keeping in mind staff's previous comments, your worship, in terms of the intent of guidelines, and the previous language, and the consistency with, with industry best practices, and what we've done in the past. Having said all of that, staff does not have any objections, and supports the, the changes here. We have, on this slide, five references to be updated from, amended from should to shall. Again, the, the changing of the word encourage to the word ensure, on two occasions on this slide, and changing again the word should to the word shall, in five instances in this, on this slide, in the areas that you see referenced, staff support. And finally, in terms of the part A group, your worship, the last slide is this one, which we have, again, seven references of should to change to shall, staff support that with one instance, I believe, yeah, that we have the addition of the words, every effort should be made to incorporate, to replace the words should be incorporated, in section 2.4, 24 of section 10.32 of the guidelines. Moving on, your worship, to the section that we have termed problematic, in terms of the, the suggested language changes. The first one is regarding single family two, and in the context of cluster development and cluster housing provisions. The reasons or the staff commentary beyond what I said earlier, in terms of the general comments that we have, in this particular case, your worship, I will try to articulate as, as best as, as I can. It's to do with the ability of, of, of staff, future staffs, when they are actually processing and administering development applications. Staff believe that is much more like, the likelihood of the, a proposal being able to accommodate the, the appropriate buffer between ALR and, and urban areas is much higher, the likelihood is much higher, when we allow for, when we have a provision that allows for cluster developments. So, the intent is, we, the staff does not support, and is believes it to be problematic, if we were to remove that provision from, from the plan.
Sure. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this. So, the blue, staff is okay with the wording in the blue, they're just not okay with the wording in the red?
Thank you for the question, councillor Richter, through, your worship. I apologise, I referenced green and, and red, I did not reference blue. Blue is what has been added by staff as part of the, the previous amendments put forward by council. So, the, the blue is something that was added after we had the first public hearing.
Okay.
Or as a result of the first public hearing, as part of that process, the blue was added. And the submission that was received on September 11th feels those to be okay, with the exception of the red.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Your worship, could you just pause for a moment? So, Mr. Seffy, I just wanna make sure, are you suggesting, then, that we'll take 4.3.5? Is it problematic, even because it's in blue, or is it acceptable? Because I think the council...
Well, the red part is problematic. The blue is fine, so only the red, which is strike, struck out by the submission, or as part of the submission that council received, the red part was struck out.
For clarity, then, if the red was struck out, the blue language and the black language would be supportable?
It would remain, because that was actually staff's recommendation. So, the blue and the black are staff's supportable sections. The red is what, what was added, and not believed to be supportable, in other words, problematic by staff.
Okay.
Is that sufficiently unclear?
I think so, and if there's more questions along the way, we'll certainly raise them, so...
Okay, so we try to distinguish, your worship, between what was originally put forward, at the, at the very beginning, that's all the, the black font. Subsequently, as part of the process, staff was asked to make amendments. As part of those amendments, the blue font was introduced. Then the submission of September 11th introduced other amendments. Those amendments are only either in green or red. And if they're in red, that means that staff does not support them, and believes them to be problematic.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's clear.
So, I, I referenced the, the, the concern with the urban ALR edge. We have similar concerns in terms of the implementation and feasibility of, of staff being able to facilitate, as part of their discussions and negotiations with future development applicants, the acquisition of roads, and making sure that they function according to their design, in terms of arterial roads, not having too many access points, as well as transition between different forms of housing. Staff believes it to be very beneficial and, and advantageous to have the provision that allows for cluster developments. Again, keeping in mind, the intent is, is to protect open houses, sorry, open, open spaces, protect trees, environmental areas, natural areas, riparian areas, that's the intent. And, and council recalls that there is actually a, a limit that's been put on that. So, beyond that, staff believe that the provision should be there, in case it's needed, to facilitate and make sure that a development that is required, to have a, a road with minimal access, is, is doing that. And that's, that's really the, the whole issue here. With regard to section 9.1, phasing, the suggestion was to, oh, sorry, this should be struck out. Yeah, sorry, the, the, the red should be struck out, it, it is an oversight, not strike it out. So, staff does not support this amendment, which is inconsistent with, with previous council direction, it is inconsistent with past practice, and actually, it's inconsistent with the council adopted policy, the neighbour planning policy.
Councillor Long has a question. Councillor Long?
And thank you, your worship, and Mr. Seffy for pointing that out, because in your earlier suggestion, if we proceed, if, if 5,300 goes ahead, and council adopts staff's recommendation to proceed with three neighbourhood plans, then, of course, this act, this statement is actually moot, because it's, it's gonna be all underway under staff initiative.
So, this should be struck out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, your worship, the single family three policies, this actually is a replication or, or the same arguments as, as I put forward previously with regard to single family two. It mirrors those, those comments, in terms of the three areas that staff do not support and believe to be problematic, to do with the ALR boundary, to do with local rural, sorry, local and collector, arterial and collector roads, as well as the transition between various, various uses. And again, in terms of the, the phasing, this should be struck out, the three references to shall should be struck out, again, because of the same reasons as, as described before on the previous slide.
Councillor Richter has a question.
Yeah, I, so that sentence, the third sentence down that's struck out, the neighbourhood plan will provide a more detailed land use plan that indicates more specifically where lot size is less than 7,000 square feet may be considered. Why is that being struck out?
Because we're not having lots less than 7,000 square feet?
Well, SR, yeah, SR3 was, goes down to 5,000, doesn't it?
Only for questioning, I think. Maybe Mr. Seffy can...
I believe, it's just a duplication, your worship, because when you read in the blue, it's already there.
Yeah.
And finally, your worship, the, the last area that staff have identified as being problematic relates to building design, and apartment buildings in particular. There is a provision in the guidelines that talks about setting back of the fourth story by 1.5 metres, and the recommendation was to amend the language. Again, these two red words, shall, in both instances should be struck out, because they are deemed to be problematic by staff. So, it is not supported to change the word should to shall. And what I've tried to do, your worship, what staff's tried to do in this case, is try to demonstrate a, a scenario where, where this does not make sense, or in fact, if it was incorporated, it would mean a more, I guess, challenging and cumbersome community plan amendment process. And that's really when you have an intersection of, of, of a road, at the intersection of a very prominent location, for example, council may wish to have the look, the urban design of, of a four-story building, where the setting back does not make sense. And if it was changed to the word shall, if there was a, a minor, in staff's opinion, amendment that did not require the setting back of the fourth story, in a case where it did make sense from a, a planning and, and urban design perspective, it would have to come back to council for a consideration of, of the community plan amendment. And again, in the provision, it references 1.5 metres, so in theory, if something came in with, say, 1.4 metres or 1.6 metres, it would still have to come back to council for a community plan amendment, for something that is really a, a minor amendment that, that should be dealt with, in terms of the, the context of, of, of the building that's So, that concludes the, the amendment one, recommendations, your worship, with the, the first part, group A, being supportable, and group B, being problematic. The second amendment regarding development applications and rezonings, and I can inform council that as of, as of today, the township is in receipt of 14 development applications in the Brookswood Furnish Community Plan area, of which five have been given third reading by council, and three have been given first and second reading by council, one of which, one of the... one of which, one of those three, has actually proceeded to public hearing. So in other words, we have five or six development applications that are at various stages of development process review by staff. So the recommendation that you see there, your worship, is to amend the policy number four of the community plan document, bylaw 5300, to say, October 23rd, rather than the previous reference to May. And finally, amendment three, your worship, is to, it relates to environmental protection, and in particular, the use of the word watercourses. And the language suggested is to have it more broadly defined and protected, and say, protect existing lakes in Brookswood Furnish as environmentally sensitive areas. And this also was something that came up as part of the public hearing on September 12th, as council records. And that concludes the-
Okay.
That concludes the presentation.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So Mr. Seffy's presentation went through in some detail, I just want to give an opportunity for any member of council who would like to ask Mr. Seffy any further questions of clarification, or I know we had an opportunity during the presentation. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, just a question. On the amendment as a whole, that was brought forth on September 11th, or-
11th.
-September 11th, in dissecting all these, what percent have we, in percentage, what percent would we have supported in that amendment, and what percent would we have supported? The staff would have supported?
Yeah, so of the original submission from Counselor Davis, is it roughly about half that were supportable, or more than half?
I think more than half, your worship, I would say probably three-quarters and one-quarter, something like that. Twenty-five percent not supportable, and 75%.
Yeah, and the unsupportable ones, she said, lost my place, I'm sorry. The unsupportable ones, where they're not recommended, it actually, it weakens, it weakens the boundaries, the ALR, say, buffer purpose. It actually, and like putting a road through, that would make it more, it'd make it a stronger buffer than it would, it would make it a weaker, it would make it a stronger buffer, but the wording that's here would make it weaker.
Your worship, thank you for the question or the opportunity to clarify. It is not the strength of the buffer, it's actually the ability of staff to make sure that the buffer is actually implemented.
Yes.
The ability to implement it becomes weaker, not the buffer itself.
That's okay, that, yeah, okay, okay, that's right, thank you.
Thank you. Any else, counsel? Okay, so thank you very much for that, Mr. Seffy, very helpful, all the work that you and your staff did. It was a good submission by Counselor Davis, but it's excellent to see the work that you did to help council understand it better. Counselor Richter, you have a question?
Yeah, and I just want to understand again why we can't look at phasing. I think that the issue of phasing came up from the community in order to prevent complete chaos and road disruptions throughout the entire Brookswood area. So what is it that's legally preventing us from looking at phasing?
Mr. Backen or Mr. Seffy?
Your worship, the, I guess the difficulty staff have with phasing is if you actually designate an area and require it to be completed or to a certain percentage, that area then can actually affect the overall progress of the community, and as well, the land values or prices that are in place, because that area may in effect preclude future development occurring. In other areas, we've been very careful to make sure that the market determines where there should be things, and we try to regulate that or control that as best we can with other tools. Now, could council mandate that in a specific sequencing? They could, but then you're going to be left with an area that may be 95% developed, and the 5% could block other areas from proceeding, which affects your market rates in that area itself. Mr. Seffy, did you wish to add anything?
Nope, thank you.
No, but the suggestion that had come forward from the community association was 50%, so how does that argument hold with 50%?
Mr. Seffy, you can perhaps help in terms of the original amendment, I don't recall it, so.
Well, it was not contemplated as part of the original community plan, nor the amendment, it was something that was introduced as part of the submission that was issued by council on September 11th. And in terms of, I guess, the nature of the problem, in terms of not being supported by staff, it is really to do with past practice, what we've done, and in terms of, in particular, as Mr. Backen referenced, the interference, if you will, with the market conditions and being seen to affect land values, if you will. So in terms of the legality of it, as council is aware, there is a requirement for council to consider every application, and I don't know if a phasing plan, despite its best attempts, can actually prohibit the processing of application. I guess council can always turn it down, but I'm not sure if it can be stipulated in a plan that council will not consider an application.
Okay, and if we stayed with the 87 plan, is there phasing in the 87 plan?
Your worship, I have to be careful how I respond in terms of the phasing. There's a plan that shows various catchment boundaries in the 87 plan. It was never intended, as part of the 87 plan, nor the 2017 plan, for an area to be completed either partially or completely, 50% or otherwise, prior to another area being opened up. The only reason for the lines on the map that show the various areas is because of the catchment and the natural topography and the school catchment, to make sure that the services within those areas is in consideration of the school, topography, watershed, and arterial and collector roads.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Long?
Well, yeah, I was just wondering if staff can bring this into context with the potential for council to initiate the three neighborhood plans ahead of time, and that would be, that would remove the need for phasing, because one of the recommendations is that any applications that would come in would be concurrently dealt with along with the development of the neighborhood plan. And I think it would be in error to assume that under the existing 87 plan, which we're trying to replace, that any development could happen without neighborhood planning. And I think that's where I think people are going wrong, they're saying, well, if we just say no to everything, we can just go ahead and do everything. We still have to have neighborhood planning. But under the new suggestion here of embarking on neighborhood plans council-driven, the need for phasing would take care of itself, would it not?
Yeah, Mr. Seffy, and I believe that any development has to have infrastructure put in place before they can develop, so that in a way does limit how development occurs, it can't occur at one end of the area without proper sewers, water lines, roads, and all these water retention ponds in place. So in a way, naturally does hinder that type of development. Mr. Seffy, maybe you can expand on that a little bit?
Expand on it? I don't think I can, your worship, you've covered it all.
Fact, you mean I was correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and thank you. Counselor Sparrow?
Yeah, just again, on the phasing topic, I know this is something that we have, as council have talked about previously, not specifically to do with Brookswood, but phasing and development in general, I know it's something I've brought up in the past. Other communities, Surrey, for example, they use phasing, they have specific wording and language in regards to phasing within there, and I'm not sure if it's their NCP process or their OCP process, but I do know that they do have that, and I think that I think what the attempt of this wording is to accomplish is to see some type of, whether it be, how it's done through the utilities, or just how it's, the patchwork-ness of some of the development that we've seen in other parts of our community. So I know this, the comments from staff were that this is not something we've done previous, as it's inconsistent with previous direction, but I think that's partly the point of this, is that this isn't something necessarily that we have done before, but maybe that we need to look into doing, so that we don't have, you know, issues that we maybe are going to repeat, and maybe that we do it in a more orderly fashion that makes a bit more sense. So I think if we're going to be, you know, embarking on doing the NCPs all at once, that that definitely then could have a real patchwork-ness of where development's going, and so, you know, maybe looking at what other communities have done, where you take certain neighborhoods and you build to a certain percentage, not necessarily fully complete, but to a certain percentage, and then you move on, makes it somewhat orderly, as opposed to just willy-nilly, which I know isn't like a total proper term, but I just feel like that's maybe what this is attempting to do. So I don't know if this is an issue that we can deal with and fix right now, but I do think, as a whole, as our whole community, not just taking one community, that we need to look at how we're doing phasing, and whether or not there's a way that we can look at it from another community's and sort of copy what they have done and learn from them. So I don't know if this is something that we could deal with in isolation on its own, aside from this process, and look at phasing as a general topic that then gets incorporated into whether it be the OCP or NCP process throughout the whole community, as opposed to just one neighborhood, or are we having to deal with this right at this moment now, and we don't have an opportunity to come back to it?
So, as we're asking Mr. Seffy questions regarding his presentation, Mr. Seffy, perhaps elaborate a little bit more on how phasing would work. Now, this is, I don't know about Surrey, how they do it, we have official community plans for different areas, like Willoughby, Alda Grove, Murrayville, Brookswood Furnish, and then within them, the neighborhood plan, so.
But I guess what my question is, is that can this topic of phasing, like if we were to, if council were to pass this and follow the directions of staff here, which is to remove this, the discussion of phasing, and that gets passed, can council, next month or whatever, bring that topic just as a separate item back to discuss and look at it from the whole community's perspective, or is this the only time that we can deal with this part of phasing within Brookswood?
Mr. Backen can answer, I think council can bring back anything at any time for discussion.
That's correct, your worship. In theory, it could be brought back, and in fact, the concept might be more easily consumed in terms of the neighborhood plans themselves, but we have to express caution, because we certainly would like to see development going north to south, east to west, whatever it is. But we've also seen situations where we've had parties acquire large tracts of land, and rather than develop them, landbank them. And we can think of several communities where we've seen significant pieces that are on hold. The phasing issue would have to be considered in terms of what if there was a threshold, whether it's 40, 50, or 60%, but in that neighborhood, it's actually controlled, and that becomes a blocking mechanism for other neighborhoods or the developments. I don't say it's impossible, I'm simply saying it complicates it, because we have seen these landbanking issues, and we've seen several instances, even in communities that are underway, where people are not developing, because they prefer to landbank, and they're actually waiting for the market to become to the level that they wish to see it. If that becomes endemic over a broader range, you then have the factors we're talking about, and that's what we're guarding against.
That helps?
It does, yeah. So it can be a topic that we revisit as a whole, and not, if this doesn't pass within the Brookswood OCP, this could be something that we look at further, taking into consideration the items you talked about.
If that's council's desire, yes, your worship, as you said, at the onset, anything can be reviewed or considered by council.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Well, yes, thank you. I'm glad we're having this conversation now, because I'm a supporter of phasing, and I understand that there is a balance to be had. The other thought I had about it, though, and I would appreciate an opportunity for a more fulsome discussion, it occurs to me that if a phasing might have some positive effect on reducing the burden on our staff, if not all applications are coming through at the same time, it would allow for more of a pragmatic control over that process. I could be, I could be wrong in my supposition, but I feel that, I do have some concerns with the rate of potential development, that we are going to be in a situation where, every time I go to a meeting where they're talking about how fast we're growing, there is some concern, do we have enough staff, and do we have the capacity for all of this growth at this time? So I would be happy to have this discussion with respect, if it can't be included here for reasons, that we do it at a relatively soon date.
I think, maybe Mr. Seffy could give maybe a broader overview. There's that motion or a recommendation that I opened with, that does allow for a budget to be allocated to this, so I think within that framework, it would be a matter of allocating that budget to staff. Mr. Seffy, can you elaborate on the workload that this would cause staff, and how that would roll out?
Your worship, the, I guess, fact of the matter is that we are nearing completion of all neighborhood plans in Willoughby, with Williams being the last of the Willoughby enabled plans, so that does open up some capacity for existing staff. And we have dealt with concurrent neighborhood plan processes in Willoughby, and staff, as I believe, in my opinion, done an excellent job in managing those processes over the years, and we believe that to be able to continue in Brookswood as well.
Okay, that sounds fair, thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I think one of the themes that we heard quite clearly at, both in June and again in September, was the idea of not repeating the confusion and chaos that seems to have marked how Willoughby has developed. And a lot of people referred to orderly development. And in my mind, I think orderly development does mean phasing. And can we not couch phasing around area, like percent of area developed, or percent of population built out? Because if we could couch it around that, then we get away from the land value argument that could hang it up. Now, with regards to the motion that's in front of us here, Mr. Seffy, you did say that there are 14 applications. Are we proposing to go three concurrent neighborhood plans here, because those 14 applications are spread amongst those three neighborhood areas? Is that why we're pushing for three?
Mr. Seffy, could you perhaps clarify why the three and not the four, or not less?
Yes, your worship, it's a number of different factors, including the ones that were referenced by Counselor Richter in terms of the location of the applications, where they're located. That's why the Booth Furnish and Rinn neighborhoods are being recommended to proceed with. Doesn't mean necessarily that we can complete all of them concurrently, it just means that we'll start them, start them all.
And realistically, how much does half a million dollars buy in terms of a neighborhood plan? Like, are we going to get 25% completion on the three of these, or 50% completion on each of them?
Your worship, it is difficult to be very specific, and it's difficult to actually compare these with the numbers, or at least the prices that we have seen in terms of costing of neighborhood plans in Willoughby, because I would suggest that a lot more work and analysis has gone into Brookswood than historically has gone into Willoughby. So I'm not avoiding the question, I'm just saying it's very difficult to say how far we might be able to take these. Ideally, we'll take them all the way, but I would suggest that perhaps if we were fortunate, we could get 75% done with all three, with half a million dollars, given the work that's been done so far.
Well, I think the phasing thing is problematic, because I think the public wants phasing, I think council's heard that. If other areas can do phasing, why can't we? Rather than, I mean, we're talking a huge geographic area in Brookswood, and to allow Brookswood as a huge geographic area to be in a state of development and flux the entire area for the next 25 years, I don't think that's fair to the residents that are already there. So I wish there was a way we could come to an agreement- there. So, I wish there was a way we could come to an agreement around phasing.
Thank you. Council Fox, any questions of the presentation?
No, I'll make a comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, we're done with that part. Thank you very much, Mr. Seffi, for clarifying for council all the questions that were asked. So, Mr. Backen, I'm just going to turn it back to you, and I believe the next step would be to look at the recommendation on page fourteen of the distribution that we have in front of us.
And Your Worship, I think Mr. Seffi can actually put the slides back up. So, in the sequencing we have, trying to account for the information we've heard, we have this, I guess, conditional resolution that calls for the neighborhood plans to proceed concurrently for the Rin, Booth, and Fernridge areas. That would be a place to start, if council so desires, then to work through the amendments. Keeping in mind, until there's actually a final adopted bylaw, we have nothing that's substantive.
Thank you. Yeah, so, before I entertain the motion.
I actually don't think this is the place to start. I think, because this motion presupposes we are going to approve this bylaw, and that's by no means clear at this point. So, I don't think we should be dealing with this one first, I think we should be dealing with that one last, after we've had a vote on an amended bylaw.
It's, it can go either way. This is, it is conditional, this one, it doesn't presuppose anything. If the bylaw fifty-three hundred was to fail, then that would fall off. However, I have absolutely no problem in taking it to the end of the process tonight, rather than at the front of the process. It's the same effect. So, Mr. Backen, can you maybe elaborate on that?
That could also be done, Your Worship. It depends, though, on the nature of the council dynamic. Concern was expressed that it may not be supportable, that being the plan, unless there was some resolution of the neighborhood plans first. So, what that could do is put us in a position where, because there's uncertainty as to the process of neighborhood plans, the bylaw fifty-three hundred, as amended, would not be supportable, and we're trying to hear from all sides, and trying to create a path that gives council the option to have a complete package to accept or reject, and not have a procedural ambiguity.
And as this is conditional, it doesn't affect, I mean, it's not putting any pressure on. Okay, I think we'll leave it to wait. There's a couple more questions, some clarification before we take the motion unless, Council Fox, did you wish to move this?
I'll make a motion that we accept this future neighborhood plan recommendation as written there.
Is there a seconder? Council Whitmarsh seconded. I'm going to close the, okay, Council Fox?
Well, I'll make a comment.
Oh, sorry, there's, there you go.
I'll make the comment that, a couple comments here. Number one, I did hear the issue of phasing, and I did hear the issue that was related to this in the original discussion, and there was two neighborhoods, Rin and Booth, that were both perceived to be the perfect sort of initiator, but in reality, phasing will take care of phasing in this particular process, because servicing becomes paramount. If we look at the applications we've received, they basically are along the northern border. There's several that are all along the northern border, that's the buffer. But if we look, go back to where we started in this process, and I think if we go back, it was Council Richter that said, no, nothing could be considered until servicing was in place. Well, we do have servicing, we have servicing right down Two Hundred Street, right across the north, right down Two Hundred Street. Now, if you look at a neighborhood, like if we looked at Fernridge, and you look down Two Hundred Street, I don't think the guy with the property over here wants to put the water line in for the four properties in between. He's going to wait for the first guy to do it, and the second guy to do it, and the third guy to do it, and the fourth guy to do it. We've got phasing in a natural process, it's called servicing. This guy over here doesn't want to pay a million and a half dollars to put the pipeline in, and then collect back fees. It's not fun. So, phasing's going to take place where servicing allows it to take place. And if we look at this, we're talking the perimeter, we're talking the north, and we're talking Two Hundred Street. Yes, Two Hundred Street is split, and it goes half a mile to the west, and if those people don't want to develop, they don't have to develop. It goes for a distance in Booth and Fernridge to the east. Phasing will take place as servicing allows phasing to take place, unless you've got a developer who's got a very deep pocket, and wants to put in a pipeline, or two pipelines, sorry, one in, one out, to support the development, his development, her development, somewhat distant from the servicing. This whole thing is premised on the water line coming down Two Hundred Street. And so I think we have to think, okay, logistics, staff input, I think we have phasing, it comes, and so what these three neighborhood plans do, Booth, oh, sorry, let's start with Rin, takes care of Two-O-eight across the top, Booth takes across the top, comes down Two Hundred to about Thirty-second, and then Fernridge goes down Two Hundred Street. The one that's out of the context of discussion is Glenwood, it's the farthest away. Nobody's going to be developing in Glenwood and bringing a water pipe from Two Hundred Street all the way over there, not unless they've got deep pockets. So, the logistics of this, and I can see where staff's coming from here, says, hey, okay, we've got servicing, these are the neighborhoods that have servicing, and it'll evolve naturally out of that, those service pipes. So, we will have, in my opinion, natural phasing through service constraints. As services move, so will your phasing move. I see a lot of heads nodding. I think I got it.
Thank you. Council Richter, it's the heads on council that need to be nodding.
Okay, I still don't see the logic, and there's only four neighborhood plan areas in this proposed OCP, and right away next year, or right away now, because we're going to pre-approve this, we're going to start three of the four. Like, I don't get how that is orderly. It's not going to be orderly. It's going to be a complete recipe for unfinished areas for who knows how long, just like we've got up in Willoughby right now. So, I can't support this motion. It's not orderly, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, this recommendation, I think, helps us in a number of ways. When I listened to the last public hearing, there was a number of people that expressed concern for the seventeen plan, and not because the seventeen plan itself was concerning for them, but it was because they were concerned about the length of time that things are taking, how long it's taken so far, how long the perception is that it'll take if the two thousand seventeen plan is approved, and now we move into a neighborhood planning process, and that might take us years to get there. And so, for many people, they were just sort of tired and fed up with the length of time this has taken for council to decide. And so, because of that, some of them just sort of were exasperated and said, just give us eighty-seven, because at least we know what it is. And so this recommendation allows us to move forward in a way that says, look, the seventeen plan is a great plan, and the timing of it will happen more efficiently than you might be imagining. The nineteen-eighty-seven process does also call for neighborhood plans in there. It's less specific, but it does call for neighborhood plans. So there is neighborhood plans that occur in that phase as well, as the two thousand seventeen plan. There's nothing that's really quicker about eighty-seven than there is about two seventeen, and this particularly makes it such that it's very efficient. The second thing is, that I think's important to note, is that this doesn't mean that we're actually, that all the development is happening in those neighborhoods at the same time, it means that the plans for those neighborhoods is being developed at the same time. Servicing will determine how quickly they get developed, and servicing will allow an orderly progression through that neighborhood as it builds out, but the plan will be in place, so we know what we're doing, it's not going to be haphazard, we'll have a good plan in place for each of those neighborhoods as the servicing becomes available. So this allows us the assuredness that we're not going to be stalled, waiting for time to pass, and it gives us the sense that, yes, servicing will give us order as we move through. It's very clear that that'll happen, it's happened in other neighborhoods that we've developed, it'll happen here as well. So I really do support this recommendation.
Thank you. Council Sparrow?
Yeah, I think that the phasing aspect is something that, as I said previously, I'd like to look into further, and whether we can incorporate it in the OCP, or whether or not it's in the NCP process, I think is another topic. But I do think that there is value in looking at all three of these neighborhood plans at the same time, where the process can be done concurrently, and there can be some value in looking at each of those neighborhood plans together, as opposed to haphazardly one after the other. And so I think that's what this really is specifying, is that we're going to start this process, and it's going to be done, you know, sooner than later, and that it will be done together, as Council Whitmarsh mentioned. So, I don't see this precluding phasing, or precluding having it be done in an orderly fashion. I think that that's something that's a separate issue, so I'm going to support this amendment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Now, Madam Clerk, would I put that under M1? M1, thanks. Okay. And the motion carries with Council Richter and Council Arneson opposed. So I'll move on to M2, and this is the Brookswood-Furnridge Community Plan, bylaw number fifty-three hundred, bylaw fifty-three oh one, and the recommendation is that council give third and final reading, so laying the official community plan bylaw nineteen-seventy-nine number eighteen forty-two, amendment Brookswood-Furnridge Community Plan, bylaw two seventeen number fifty-three hundred, and that council give third reading to Brookswood-Furnish Tree Protection bylaw twenty-seventeen number fifty-three oh one. Can I have a motion, please?
And Your Worship, if we just add the words "as amended"?
As amended, thank you. And then we deal, so that comes after, this has to come on the floor. So, there's just a question from council, just to clarify, the amendments one, two, and three come on after this is moved and seconded. So, with what I read, "as amended" previously, the correct wording, Mr. Backen, I know we have to take this, you said in the beginning, this is complex, we want to make sure that we got the motion correct.
Your Worship, this is a precursor to amendment one. The language is as you've read out, with the phrase "as amended" added, and what that means is, we're back to the original bylaw, with all the amendments council had previously worked their way through, so now we can go from that point on to further amendments, if that's the will of council.
Thank you. Okay, so, as long as council understands, I need a mover and a seconder. Council Qualley moves it, is there a seconder? Council Whitmarsh seconds. So, at this point, I know what Council Davis had asked to be put on regarding the first, I call it the First Amendment, now it's not like I'm an American. Amendment number one.
Part A here.
Yes, so the part, the part A.
Yes, this is it. Can I move that we amend this on top of the fifty-three, fifty-three oh?
Fifty-three hundred.
Fifty-three hundred.
Yeah.
And can I separate it?
Well, you can go part, so you can move part A.
I want to move part A, and move part B, but can we have them separated?
Yeah, you can move part A first, and then we can discuss with part B second, if you wish. So, if you want to move part A, supportable, and amend it to that, we can deal with that one, and then certainly another one could come on. Okay, so it's, so, Council Davis, is that clear, Madam Clerk? And for the minutes?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, Council Fox seconds that, so I'm going to open up amendment one. Any discussion on part A supportable, as Mr. Seffi had outlined in his, and what we have in front of us? Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. And so this will be labeled M2 for the rest of the, is that correct, Madam Clerk? M2, all the way through? Okay, thanks. And that carries unanimously. Okay, so, Council Davis, part B, did you wish to move that, or do you wish to leave it? That's up to you.
Well, why not talk about it? Why not hammer it through? So, I'd like to move part B, please? The problematic.
So you want to move part B as it was originally submitted by your motion, September eleventh?
As a whole.
Okay, so the balance, okay. Second by Council Richter, so I'll open that. And so it's open for discussion. Council Long?
Your Worship, I'm understanding, because this is showing on the slide that part B problematic is what's being moved, so it would be with the staff's amendments, is that correct?
Actually, as I clarified, it's the portion of Council Davis's submission on September eleventh, that was not included under part A. I think that's the correct way, that's Council Davis's intention.
I understand that this, we're moving it as per the explanation given by staff.
We should, we just pause for a moment, so we're on the same page. If Mr. Seffi could bring up the first slide of part B, we use that as our discussion, because it's important, we have the right context, so wait for it a moment.
Is that, did I get that correct, Council Davis, or do you want to move that we don't accept?
Move that we accept it.
Accept it as it was originally submitted, okay.
Worship, so just for it clear, that would mean with the red left in. Is that your intent?
As been.
No.
As staff has.
So then, it would be with the red removed, with the blue and the black effectively, and the red removed.
Which doesn't really require a motion, because it would just revert back to the original.
No, there's some change.
Oh, is there, Mr. Seffi?
Your Worship, may I just interject? It is not the removal of the red, it is turning the color red into color green, because remember, the striking out was not by staff, the striking out of those sections was what was put forward. So, the question is, is council wishing to have that remain as red, which means that we are not incorporating them, or does council wish to have them turn into green, which is that they are to be incorporated?
Your Worship, I think that's actually confusing, because there's no green on that screen. So the question is, do we want to go and move the blue and the red, or do we want to move the blue, or is any of that necessary if we simply seek to retain the blue with the black?
Well, Your Worship, the reason why I referenced green was because that was used for those areas that staff supported, were being supportable. There's no other way of explaining this, because the striking out was not staff's recommendation. Staff is suggesting to not have it struck out. The way you have it on the screen, that red, the first line of red, has been struck out, not because staff is suggesting to be struck out, but rather the submission that was made wishes it to be struck out. What staff is saying is, let's not have it struck out, and let's have it remain, whatever color you want it to remain, but not have it be struck out.
So technically, part, the first motion that was moved and approved by council, the amendment, takes care of the language changes. The problematic part, if we did nothing, would just remain as, without any changes. It's already, the language is already there, so unless you wanted to go and change it all to what the recommendation was, so that's, you know, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
I would like to go with the, what the recommendations have been, or from.
From staff?
From staff.
So if you want to continue with recommendations from staff, then we don't even need to move part B. Is that correct?
No.
Or, I don't have it in front of me, part B, you don't even need to move it, because then it just remains. So, yeah, we don't even need to move part B, because it remains. So, is that correct? Madam Clerk's nodding her head viciously, yeah. So, the only reason you'd want to move it is if you wanted to take the recommendation, the original. So after staff have gone through it, yeah, let's give a minute.
Okay, now, I'm confused, okay.
That was, it's gone, yes. So you can just leave it if you wish.
Let's leave it.
Okay, okay, sure. Council Richter?
All right. So basically, what we're seeing on the screen in front of us is part of the document, as is, that came to council from the Brookswood-Furnrich Community Association.
That's correct.
And by, staff have said these are problematic and don't want to do it, but the community wants to do it.
Oh, you're right. So it would require a motion of council, yeah, it would require a motion of council to accept those changes from the.
So, the motion that I feel is in front of us right now is to say, well, I seconded it, and I thought what I was seconding.
Sorry, I didn't accept the second, we were still discussing the wording, so clarification.
What do you mean you didn't accept the second? Yes, you did.
I'm not going to argue with you.
I seconded it.
I'm not going to argue with you. It can be fine. It was to, Council Davis wanted clarification on his motion, so as I was going through that, I know you said you seconded it, but the chair has to accept the second. So, you're welcome to move it, Council Richter.
Okay, I would like to move that the part B amendments be accepted, just like the part A amendments were.
And that's fine, that's very clear. And that's fine, that's very clear. Is there a seconder to that? Okay, Counsel Davis seconds that, so I'm going to open up Amendment 1. And as to counsel, so Counsel Fox on, so basically, what the motion now would be, that would accept the, as September 11th proposal came through, the language that staff had gone through and said maybe, or would be problematic, we now would accept those as the original request.
As what came, because what's printed in front of us is what came through on that September 11th document.
So Counsel Fox, if you wish to, you're on the floor.
9.1 is...
That should be struck out.
Should be struck out. Could you use a squiggly line, so we don't get it confused with the straight lines? Because the straight lines are causing problems right now. So could you go to the second page of that particular... Okay, so again, where land is being protected for tree retention, conservation, open space, and/or ALR buffer purposes through residential cluster development. So the and/or ALR purpose, buffer purposes was struck out by the Brookswood Furniture Community Association, but it was part of the original staff presentation in the OCP. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And just for clarification, because there's no line through shall, 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 at the bottom there, could you just, Mr. Seffy, explain, are you able to, you want should, or do you want shall? Is staff recommending, or should, or do they see shall as problematic?
Your worship, I apologize for confusing counsel.
I just want to make sure I'm...
The crossing out, staff has not made any changes, is the color that signifies staff's position. It is not the striking out. So whatever striking out of any word you see, or not, is as was submitted. So under section 9.1, the two words "should" were struck out by the submission, and the two words "shall" added by the submission, or the three, the three words "shall." The staff's position is indicated in the color, which is left red as opposed to green, indicating problematic.
Okay.
So they should not have been struck out by staff, because that's how it was submitted to the township.
So the...
The red signifies that.
Yeah.
Staff does not support it.
Yeah.
So basically, if you can summarize this.
Yeah.
Clarify.
Yeah, we have a speaking order here, so I'll just go through and then, so Counsel Fox, you're complete...
I guess, I guess then in summary, the context of these two pages is, the original Brookswood OCP plan went before us on July the 24th, had all this language. Subsequently to that, we received a submission through Counsel Davis, which included some revised language, which is in the red with the strikeout. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So in effect, with this amendment, if we wish to agree with staff's recommendations, we would defeat this amendment. If we wish to agree with the submission...
Okay, got it.
Then we would accept this amendment. Okay, thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh? Did I? Oh, sorry, Counsel Long, yeah, I must have pushed, Counsel Long, you're on.
Well, thank you. And I was just going to clarify that in supporting this motion, you'd be going against the whole explanation we had from staff. So staff have divided these recommendations into two categories, one that's supportable, which you've now passed, and the second part, which is only about a third or maybe a quarter, are not supportable by staff, and we went through them. Mr. Seffy moved them through, so I can't possibly support them, because I agree with staff that many of them are problematic. So by defeating the motion that's been put on the floor, we would be status quo with what was already on the, am I correct?
Yes.
So I'll be not supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I think the, we just went through and agreed to accept about 70% of the changes that were recommended, and so now we're talking about 30%. And based on the presentation from staff, I would not support these additional changes. It was clear to me at the last public hearing that even for those who did support these changes and brought them, and brought some of them forward, that even if they weren't all accepted, they believed that the 17 plan was still the best plan. And so the fact that we've accepted already 70% of their recommendations, I think, would allow us to move forward in a really great way, and I think I will support, or not support this last amendment.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I think Counsel Long sort of summarized it. So basically, we got four pages of amendments from the community, and the community association asked us to pass them in one lump sum. What staff have done is said, no, we need to have two lump sums. The first lump is the lump we're okay with, the second lump is the lump we're not okay with. So basically, by putting this motion on the table, I'm asking counsel if they agree with the community association, because these are part of the amendments that came from the community association.
Thank you.
Or the other half of the amendments.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? So I'm going to call a question on the amendment. And this is on the amendment problematic, so if we vote in favor, then we're going to accept all of, basically, it would be all of the recommendations from the September 11th submission. If we vote against this amendment, then we have already accepted about this, well, roughly 70% of the recommendations. So that's what's on the floor right now. So I'll call the question. And the amendment fails with Counsel Fox, Counsel Whitmarsh, Mayor Fros, Counsel Qualley, Counsel Sparrow, Counsel Long opposed. Okay, so now we'll move on to the amendment number 2, if I can come up in front of us. Thank you. And it's in front of counsel, could I have a mover, please? Counsel Fox moves it and a seconder. Counsel Long seconds. Any discussion on the amendment number 2? Counsel Richter?
Okay. Why exactly are we doing this? Because didn't we have a cutoff date of May 16th? There was only one application that came in after May 16th. That got voted down. So why are we putting this in? What we're saying is, the 14 that are in staff's hands now can go under 87 or 2017? Or does it have to go under 87?
Mr. Seffy?
Your worship, the primary reason why this is being recommended is the time that has lapsed since May. We believe at a staff level that it's reasonable to consider all of those applications that were submitted, that were complete and valid applications that were submitted, that have been submitted so far, be considered on the same basis as the ones that were prior, that were submitted prior to the May deadline, again, because of the time that has lapsed.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, just a question through the mayor to staff. Is it, this amendment says that the, these plans will be, were received on according to the 1987 plan. Is it also such that these applications would also meet the requirements of the 2017 plan as it's currently being considered for adoption?
I would request some clarification from Counsel Whitmarsh, your worship, in terms of, I guess, the question, I'm not sure I follow, what aspect of the 2017 plan are you thinking they might be wishing to, or wanting to be compliant with?
Mr. Seffy, I think the question is, is the, is this resolution meaning that the applications that would be consistent with the 87 plan, to the best of our knowledge, are they also, as terms of land use designations, consistent with the 2017 plan?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on amendment number 2? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. That carries with Counsel Richter and Counsel Arneson opposed. And move on to amendment number 3, in this regards some wording changes. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Arneson moves it second. Counsel Qualley. Discussion on this amendment. Counsel Fox?
Just to say, this is what we heard from the residents, that the term, and I think staff agrees wholeheartedly with, this water courses is not appropriate, it does not provide enough environmental conservation mechanisms associated with it. So I'm fully in support of this.
Thank you. Mr. Seffy, can he, I know you explained this once, can you just explain this again for us?
Certainly, your worship, there are, I guess, multiple reasons. One is the ownership, the tenure of the lakes, we don't really have any control over them, because they're privately owned. Second part is that water courses are typically fed by other water courses. These lakes are not water courses, they're actually fed underground, and they're water bodies. And designating them as water courses has implications, including, I guess, jurisdiction by the most senior levels of government.
Oh, thank you. Counsel Richter?
Do we need to amend that title to read water courses and lakes, or water courses and water bodies?
Mr. Seffy, can you provide us some advice on that?
Certainly, we can do that, your worship. We are suggesting adding the word environmental protection, sorry, environmentally sensitive areas. The current wording is water courses. So what we could do is amend the terminology to say water courses, water bodies, and environmentally sensitive areas, but leave the actual provision as you see on the screen in green font.
Okay, do we need an amendment to change the title then?
It'd be an amendment to the amendment, and if there's, if counsel agrees to it unanimously, by unanimous consent, we could take the amendment to the amendment. So if you wish to make that amendment to the amendment, and I got a seconder, then we can go from there. So you wish to add the word water bodies? And water bodies, is that correct? Water courses and, sorry, Mr. Seffy, that was...
Water courses, water bodies, and environmentally sensitive areas.
Yeah, so adding the word comma and water bodies. So is there a seconder to that? Counsel Fox, by unanimous consent, is there any opposition to that? Okay, so then we'll accept that as amendment to the amendment. So now we're back on to the amendment. Any further discussion of the amendment as amended? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. That carries unanimously. So now we're back to, that was number 3, so now we're back to the motion as amended. And is there any further discussion on the motion as amended?
The main motion.
The main motion as amended.
Read the motion.
The motion is that counsel give third and final readings, aligning the official community plan by law 1979, et cetera, and then that counsel give third reading to Brookswood Furniture Tree Protection by law as amended, and now it's as amended. Counsel Richter?
Yes, they want to eliminate any reference to 5,000 square foot lots and replace it with 7,000 square foot lots.
Okay, so that's been moved, is there a seconder to that? I see no seconder?
I'll second it.
Okay, Counsel Davis seconds it, put that amendment on the floor. Any discussion? Counsel Davis?
If we, I have a question through the staff. If we reduce that, if we take the 5,000 out, how many areas, I guess it'd be really hard to say, but how many lots would that affect in the plan, or in the OCP, in the plan?
Mr. Seffy, is there any way to make an estimation, or a percentage of area, maybe? It's hard to...
Not at this moment, your worship.
That's a difficult one to...
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I wouldn't support that recommendation, or the, you know, we talked a lot about trying to make some housing more affordable, we talked about being able to age in place, we had a lot of people indicate, seniors indicate, that this would be a way for them to age in place in Brookswood. So I think we came up with a compromise and suggested that there could be a 10% of that area, which is still relatively small, leaving 90% for 7,000 square foot and larger. Only 10% could be smaller than 7,000 square feet for those people who like to age in place, or for young families looking to start out. And I think it would be a real mistake for us not to consider that as we think of housing prices. So for 10%, I think we need to do that. It's a good stewardship of our land, and I won't support that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I'll call the question. And the amendment fails with Counsel Fox, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Whitmarsh, Mayor Fros, Counsel Qualley, Counsel Sparrow, Counsel Davis, Counsel Long opposed. So back to the main motion as amended. And with that, I'll call the question.
Can we not speak to the main motion as amended?
Well, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I want to counsel the vote, I thought you...
You already had it.
Yeah, so I was looking for, and I thought your name was up there from the last time you were speaking, so I felt you already had, so go ahead, Counsel Richter.
I think what I don't like about this plan, and I do appreciate that we've made some changes to it now, which will be helpful, but overall, and in the final analysis, I don't think we need to recreate every community in every spot in the township. We can have communities that are different from the other communities in the township, and I think it's good if we do have that kind of diversity. And in the final analysis, I'm not convinced that this plan does enough to protect the DNA of Brookswood, as it currently extends. So for that reason, I'm not going to support this OCP for a second time.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Counsel Arneson, there you go.
Thank you. It's great to have an opportunity, actually, to express some of my thoughts about this long, rewarding, and somewhat arduous process. So you'll have to indulge me for a couple of minutes, because I've listened to everybody else for hours, so hope you don't mind. It won't be too long.
I put the timer on?
As long as the hook doesn't come out, we'll be fine. This is really a defining moment, after a long and intensive process, to gather further information through public engagement, in order to address the fate of the southern and undeveloped areas of Brookswood Fernridge. After hundreds, if not thousands, of hours, it has come down to this very difficult adjudication of what is in the best interest of the community, both now and going forward. The task is made more difficult, I believe, based on the lack of real consensus, which came through loud and clear at the public hearings. There are many who favor the 1987 existing plan, many others favor the draft 2017 plan, while still others support the draft plan with comprehensive amendments, so we went through those tonight. But the overall objective also is made more difficult, because in real time, we are trying to make an assessment of something that will take place and have to endure for the next 30 to 40 years. And there is also the challenge of balancing the public interest, which is very diffuse. There is a difference between the perspectives of long-term residents, who may wish to have the community remain relatively unchanged, versus those who have made the decision already to realize a long-term goal of selling in the near future and moving elsewhere, as well as, you know, other different options. It is therefore important to recognize, I believe, that no decision under these circumstances would be actually wrong, but is more likely to reflect different philosophical perspectives, and perhaps timeframes. I have always believed that the OCP for this area must be very forward-thinking, and would hope that the environment, to include trees, the aquifer, and other natural amenities, would form the DNA of this OCP. Sustainability is the most important consideration. We have to make sure that we are not acting in a way that is going to adversely affect future generations. Overall, I've used this analogy to speak to the two different plans. To me, the 2017 plan is a Model T, and the draft 2017 plan is a Tesla. However, it seems that actually what I want is a spaceship, so we're not quite there. But in this, I would note the hard work and extraordinary dedication of senior planning staff in overseeing the project, compiling all the elements together into a cohesive strategy, so that we may find our way forward. However, I do have concerns, and my concerns basically are... However, I do have concerns, and my concerns basically arise from the fact that some of the strategies that have been articulated in the plan are going to be put forward to a neighborhood planning level, and that once these plans roll out, it is up to the political will of any individual council to make these determinations. And therefore, I do have some concerns that some of this may not materialize over time. So, I'm cautiously optimistic, but I think that we all need to maintain our vigilance. And what I'd like to say finally is whichever way the vote turns out, I think we all are committed here to a principled approach, to limit environmental degradation, seek creative opportunities to enhance the area, and that we should always be looking to ways to reach out to the community to make sure that the neighborhood plans and any subsequent developments are congruent with our lofty principles.
Thank you for that. Counselor Qualley.
Thank you. I'll take that Tesla. In July, when we voted on this, I felt like council had gone too far, too fast with the amendments and the changes, and we were not left with the document that staff and public created. We modified it too fast on the fly, and I couldn't support that. Comments and some of the potential amendments made by some counselors were really concerning to me. I heard things like adding water meters to new buildings, lowering DCCs, reducing our ability to pay for critical infrastructure. There is just so many suggested amendments that made me concerned for the ultimate future of development in Brookswood. I had little confidence in our ability to create neighborhood plans in a timely fashion. The prospect of spending the next 12 years on neighborhood planning processes wasn't a future I wanted for any of us. I felt it would force the people in the community who've waited so long for development and change in their area to wait for an indeterminate amount of time. I think with these amendments that we've passed tonight, we have a plan now to process and properly facilitate development in Brookswood with the neighborhood planning process running concurrently and the fact that we've dealt with the existing applications in a fair and timely process, I think we can adequately deal with the environmental concerns, and the free market will determine how and when development will occur. So, with better assurances that we can finally move forward, and with my tremendous thanks to staff for their hard work and patience, I'm actually going to support this plan as it's amended tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Sparrow.
Thank you. Well, this has been quite a journey that has spanned my two terms on council anyways, and many years before that. I think, you know, the previous, when this was in front of us back in July, you know, I had my concerns with the, Chair Counselor Qualley's comments with the process and the way we went through, the amount of amendments we went through, the changes that we did, and then, you know, not hearing from the public on those changes. Being able to have that now sent out to the public and go through the process of hearing from them yet again has given me some assurance that we are getting closer. And I do think that this is a plan that will never be 100% perfect, and I do think it's something that is fluid and something that we can, over time, look at and tweak and have things that we've learned through previous processes. So, you know, I think that this will never be 100% perfect, but I think through the neighborhood planning process that we will be initiating, we can really dial down on some of the concerns of some of the vagueness that was spoken about by the residents, which really does get dealt with in the neighborhood planning process, where we can really focus in on each neighborhood. So, I am going to support it tonight. I think that we have made some amendments, and we have taken a step forward to having a plan that I think will be beneficial to Brookswood and our community as a whole. And so, I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Any further discussion, comments? Counselor Davis.
Just a quick comment. I said this before. No matter what plan we have here, if council doesn't abide by it and support it, it's, I look at Willoughby and every report that comes to our table, we upzone it, upzone it, upzone it. So, we've got a plan, let's stick with it. And I hope the future councils will support the plan because I'm, it's, I think, I'm going to move ahead, I'm going to vote for it, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yeah, I've made a few speeches over the last six years regarding Brookswood, and I'm going to keep mine really short. I just want to thank staff for all of their hard work in really a difficult task. I think there's a lot of good input from the community, and they had a difficult task of condensing into document that we could review. Also, I need to thank the community. Over the last six years, they've been very patient. They've come out to the open houses, they've come out to the workshops, they've had their input, they've had their say, and I really commend the community for all of their input. And I know not every one of us on council got everything we wanted in this plan, and not everybody in the community got everything they wanted. However, I think something as complex as this is an extremely difficult thing to go through, to put through, and to come to some sort of consensus. And, you know, the vote will be the vote, but I think it's important that we thank the community for their patience, for still sticking with us and coming out and providing the input, and for staff for all of their hard work and working with us to condense and to work and try and make some sense out of all that, thousands of pieces of information that came through into document, and to thank council for their patience, their hard work. And I know that members of council, all members of council have taken this extremely seriously, and they feel for their community. We are in the business of building complete communities, communities that are going to be here for future generations, and that we have to look to the future, not to the past. And so, I'm very thankful for a council that has worked so hard to bring this to this day. And the vote will be what it is, but I just want to make sure that I did thank everyone. And Counselor Fox, you have something to say?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm just going to say something different at the end of this, and this is a note from my wife. Thank you all for the many sleepless nights that I've spent determining what's going on in this plan. She thanks you for finally bringing it, and she will remember October 23rd, 2017 with great joy because finally I might get a night's, a nice night's sleep with some guy that sleeps beside me. So, there you go. It's been a long, tough journey.
We'll leave it to Diane to have the last word.
Diane can have the last word, yeah.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to call the question on M2, as amended. And it carries with Counselor Richter and Counselor Arneson opposed. Seven to two. Yes. Okay, we're going, this has been a lot of work. We're going to take a five-minute recess. All right, we're back. I think everyone's back, and we'll get rolling with M3. M3 is a...
I'm listening.
Oh, Counselor Richter, a question?
Yeah. So, when this bylaw first came to us, it was, there was a tree bylaw attached to it. And so, I'm wondering what's the status of that tree bylaw now? And the second thing is the Cedar Creek manufactured home park designation. When will those come back to us?
Well, the tree bylaw, we just gave third reading to it tonight.
No, you didn't give it. You gave third reading...
No, we did. It was part of the motion, third reading. I read it out to the Brookswood Furnish Tree Protection bylaw. That was part of the original motion. So, third reading, so I hope that answers the question. It's been given third reading. And, sorry, other question?
The Cedar Hill or Cedar Creek manufactured home park?
Mr. Back, and there's a motion, I believe, on...
Correct, Your Worship. Direction was given to staff to begin the process to take that area and to change its designation from lots to mobile homes. That would only be relevant if the plan had gone through. Now that has occurred, we can now start work on the timeframe. Too early to tell, but now that process begins.
Okay, thank you. Does that help you, Counselor Richter?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll start over again. M3 was an item that was deferred during the July 10th, 2017 regular evening council meeting, and till council considered third reading of the Brookswood Furnish OCP. Third and fourth reading have been given to the Brookswood Furnish OCP, so now it is appropriate to put the rezoning application 100464, Blau Triple J Poultry Farm Seymour, bylaw 5289, and 5290 is here. So, for third reading, so it asks council for a motion. Counselor Fox, second by Counselor Whitmarsh. Any discussion on M3? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on M3. M3 carries with Counselor Richter and Counselor Arneson opposed. So, now we move on to other business. Counselor Richter has a notice of motion. I'm going to put Counselor Richter on. It's Counselor Ri...
I'm going to leave.
Counselor Qualley is going to leave for this discussion. We'll give Counselor Qualley a minute. Okay, Counselor Richter.
Yes, I'd like to withdraw the notice of motion that's currently on the table, and I'd like to replace it with a notice of motion for the November 6th regular evening meeting. And the replacement notice of motion for November 6th is as follows. Whereas a key part of council's job is to oversee the proper use of taxpayers' resources, whereas this oversight should occur in a transparent, objective, and arms-length manner, and whereas sitting members of council should not be using township resources to benefit their businesses...
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt, but we should ask Counselor Qualley to come back in then? No, or is it still clo...
Therefore, be it resolved that council adopt a policy that sitting members of council not bid on township work nor use their businesses to bid on township work for the duration of their tenure on council. Be it further resolved that council asks staff to revise all appropriate policies to include this provision, and to ensure that sitting members of council are not asked or encouraged to bid on township work. And be it finally resolved that council also adopt a policy that township resources not be used to benefit the businesses of sitting members of council throughout their time on council. So, that's a notice of motion for November 6th.
Thank you. Okay, but that was to do with policy, not as particular member of council?
Right, Your Worship. But as a notice of motion, it can now be brought back to the next meeting.
Okay, fair enough.
There's no motion at this point.
Thank you. Okay, so if Counselor Qualley can come back in. And we will move on to Counselor Fox as soon as Counselor Qualley gets back. So, your mic is on whenever you're ready to go and when she's back.
So, um...
Just wait for Counselor Qualley.
Oh, okay. So, I won't read the whereas's because I think they're fairly clear. I will read that therefore be it resolved that a strongly worded letter be sent to the premier and the minister of transportation at our local MLAs requesting that the Highway 1 expansion project planned through to 232nd Street and the upgrades at interchanges of 232nd and 264th be moved ahead as per the original timetable, and further that a meeting of the ministry, minister of transportation and full complement of township council be requested for the earliest date possible to discuss these and other infrastructure projects pending in the township. I assume...
Thank you. Before I ask for a secondor, just some clarification.
Yeah, I should...
So, the requesting that Highway 1 expansion project planned through to 264...
264 should read, actually.
That should be 264, okay.
My apologies.
No problem. And that a meeting with the minister of transportation and ministry staff?
And ministry, yeah, that's probably a good idea. And ministry staff.
It may be that she'll just send staff anyway, but we can only request it, so if that's okay to move that with that wording?
Yes, and staff it would be.
Okay, thank you. Second by Counselor Whitmarsh. Any discussion on that?
Yeah.
Sir, Counselor Fox, if you're to speak to it?
So, I have a great deal of concern of what's happening and what's happened since September the 1st, and I don't see any of it in a particularly positive nature. I'm reading headlining, headliners like this, and seeing the results of what has happened since the tolls have come off with the incredible reversal of what I think was an environmentally sustainable approach. We see a number of end results. Number one, there's 30,000 more truck, vehicles going across the Portman Bridge on a daily basis. We see the 555 bus, Carville Bus Exchange, having empty parking spaces on a daily basis, and I drive by there quite frequently. We see congestion, we see motor vehicle accidents, we see, as a result, ICBC's rates are going to go up again. We hear all these stories. I think we need to get the Fraser Valley back on track. This has to be a priority. We, I'm saying we need to get back to getting people out of cars, into transportation, mass transportation ridership, not off of transportation ridership and back into cars. I leave for a morning meeting in Burnaby at a quarter to seven for a nine o'clock meeting. It's just totally ludicrous, and it doesn't matter. In my location, I listen to 7:30, and I flip a coin when I make that last call, and I'm either going number one, and it could be chaos, or I'm going D's Tunnel, and it could be chaos. And oftentimes, they're both chaos. It's literally unacceptable. And with more, sorry, with less daylight, more rainy weather, all those factors, I think we need to sit down with our ministry of transportation and their staff and just tell them we've can't, this is not acceptable in the Fraser Valley. We need these projects done, and done now. Thank you.
Counselor Long.
Your Worship, you know where I stand on this. It's critical that we get this meeting set up, but I'd like to just expand it slightly and make sure that we CC the federal representatives too, because I think they'd be interested in, Highway 1 was a federal jurisdiction at one point.
Yep, true.
Wouldn't hurt to CC them, and probably our neighbors in Abbotsford. They must be also incredibly frustrated with the stallup that happens between Chilliwack and Langley is ridiculous as well. So, everybody east of the valley is going to be interested in this expansion, so let's CC Abbotsford and Chilliwack as well.
I'm in agreement, that's fine.
Thank you. Your Worship, we don't have a secondor recorded? No, Counselor Whitmarsh was the secondor, sorry. I guess I would say a lot of...
My suggestion was to CC these other people.
Okay, so we can add that with consent of council? Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, you know, I'm going to support this Counselor Fox, but I'm also going to wish you a lot of good luck with it. I mean, seriously, do you really expect an NDP government to support money going into Rich Coleman's riding? Like, realistically, I think we're just wasting a lot of hot air here, but...
I would ask that we be respectful to other levels of government as per our policy.
How was I not respectful? I said the NDP are very unlikely to put a lot of money into Rich Coleman's riding. That's not disrespectful, that's factual.
Opinion, that's just my opinion, just a reminder.
And I really think that the suggestion that was made about perhaps trying to get Abbotsford on board with us would be helpful in this because a lot of the traffic funnels out to Abbotsford as well, too.
Counselor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. Well, my two cents is I think it's great, and I support this. The only other thing that I want to come from this discussion is just to make sure that we have the minister themselves and their officials to actually kind of stretch the conversation because I realize that the more you expand freeways, the more traffic you get, and it's sort of self-defeating in the longer term.
In a way, yes.
In a way, so I would like to discuss other methodologies that they have in mind to remove or reduce single occupancy vehicles, because I think it has to be a multi-pronged approach.
Would that be right, Sharon?
Thank you. Counselor Qualley. Counselor Qualley, let's keep it to the topic here.
Further to your motion, Counselor Fox, I'd like to move an amendment. I would like to move that we send a letter to our counterparts in Chilliwack and Abbotsford asking for their support in writing a letter to the LMLGA, the Lower Mainland Local Government Association, to lobby the provincial government on our behalf. That's the amendment to that motion, and I'd like to talk about it if I can.
I think we could take that as a separate motion after this one. I think we could take that as a separate motion after this one?
Well, no, I think we can take it as a separate...
Okay, so it's another letter, it's a different letter, that's... Okay, that's fine, but it's a different letter, is what I understand. It's a letter to LMLGA, it's not a... So we'll deal with one letter, then we'll have another letter on?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, if we can deal with one letter, then get to the next one. Okay, I'm going to call the, no further discussion, I'm going to call the question on Counsel Fox's, that's O2, Oxygen, O2. Okay, carries unanimously. Okay, Counsel Qualley, you've got the floor for your letter.
Thank you. So we had an LMLGA strategic planning session on Saturday, and I'm the third, uh, the third chair, third vice chair for our Lower Mainland Local Government Association, and the other people at the table from Chilliwack and Abbotsford expressed the same concerns we have here. And the LMLGA has minister meetings set up in the next number of weeks. So I would suggest Counselor Fox that, uh, we send this letter to the Lower Mainland Local Government Association and encourage our counterparts in Chilliwack and Abbotsford to write a letter, also asking the Lower Mainland Local Government Association to lobby on our behalf when they are in Victoria meeting with ministers, and having three more voices added to this level of concern, I think would provide some level of effect.
Okay, so you've moved it with the speech. And second, second by Counsel Fox, discussion on Counsel Qualley's request for a letter to LMLGA, or is it to LMLGA and copy to the mayor's or...
Well, to, um, it's to the LMLGA, CC Mayor Gates and Mayor Braun, asking them also to write a similar letter to LMLGA.
Thank you, okay. Uh, so it's removed and seconded, Counsel Fox seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on all three. Carries unanimously, and, uh, is there any other business? Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, to move the request today from the delegation for the Back Country Horsemen, uh, the trail to move their, uh, their request to the, uh, budget process for 2018 budget process.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes.
Counsel Davis seconds it, so I'm, okay, I'm just going to leave this. Anybody want to discuss it? Counsel Long?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to follow our policy, which is to refer to staff.
Yeah, so it's refers to the budget process, which is similar.
Yeah, but staff should be in...
Same effect, yeah. Anything else on that? Seeing nothing, I'll call the question on, uh, four. That carries unanimously. Okay, so, uh, any other business I have? I'm going to clear the queue, and then I'm going to start again. Counsel Long?
No, I'm done.
Oh, okay, came up again. Counsel Qualley?
Thank you. So I'd like to bring to council's attention the letter we received in distribution on Thursday, October 5th, from a concerned resident named Rhonda, who wrote a message to council regarding another councillor's behavior on social media and bullying. And, um, I just wanted to, um, thank her for writing this letter. It was, uh, it's caused some consternation in the community about, um, sort of my capacity and what I've done here in the township and my business. And I did consult, uh, Human Resources Department here at the township and asked if there was any sort of recourse for me as an elected councillor who feels that they have been a part of a harassment on a completely different and unnecessary level, something that our human resources policy around a respectful and safe workplace addresses. And, uh, I am, the policy, uh, has been violated, but unfortunately, there's no recourse for the policy for elected officials. Elected officials have free rein to behave as they see fit, where and when and how they see fit, and, uh, I think we should perhaps look at some policy adjustments around our HR policy that can actually provide this, uh, with some teeth for, um, for members of council. If what happened to me in the last couple of weeks happened to any of our staff members, there would be considerable repercussions to that staff member, and just because somebody is elected, the only recourse for that person is the next election. So I'm working closely with other counterparts in other municipalities who are currently being bullied and harassed by members of the public and members of council, and, um, I'll be working with them to bring forward some suggested policy changes that will affect the way council behaves, because the behavior in recent weeks is abhorrent, and we cannot allow this to continue.
Thank you. Counsel Sparrow?
Yeah, I wanted to add my comments to Counsel Qualley's, um, comments. Um, you know, for two years before I was elected, my first election, I sat in the audience and I watched this council. And I sat there and I, um, oftentimes was the only person in the audience, but, uh, I sat there and I made a promise to myself that if I was ever given the privilege to be able to sit in these seats, that I would stand up and, uh, speak up for what I believe is right, and, um, no matter how hard that was or how intimidating it was, uh, I would use the opportunity that I have to make a difference. And, uh, you know, I know this is a difficult thing to talk about, and I'm sure I will get, find myself the target of, of attacks or, um, threats for standing up and joining Counsel Qualley in her, in her comments, but, you know, I, four, I have four daughters, and if any one of my four daughters were treated the way I have been treated, members of this council have been treated, staff have been treated, over the last six years, it would be very clear that there would be, being bullied, and there would be repercussions, and someone would stand up and, and, and say it wasn't right. And unfortunately, it's been allowed to grow and fester, and, and this type of treatment to ourselves has been considered normal in some way, and considered par for the job, and, and something we all should just accept as reality. Um, and I think that that is wrong, and I think the, like I said, there isn't repercussions. Members of staff cannot reprimand members of council, the mayor's job is not to do that. The only way we have to deal with these things is to stand up and speak up against it and to say it's not right, and it's not right, and it hasn't been right for a long time. And as was said, if members of our staff acted this way, um, they would be dealt with, and there would be repercussions, because it would be very clear that it's not tolerated. So I honestly don't think there's necessarily an easy solution for us to come up with at this table right now, this evening, um, but I think there is a, the, the issue is, is bigger, and there is a symptom of, of some bigger issues going on here, and if we don't talk about them, and if we don't sit here and stand up and be brave enough to, to say what's happening isn't right, then it will just continue to be normal, and it will continue to be allowed as how we should treat each other. And I think we are all respected adults at this table, and I think we need to all start acting that way. I add my comments.
Thank you. And just on that, there is, on that distribution, the respectful workplace policy, just for all of our benefit, to remind us of the policy. Okay, is there any other business? Seeing none?
Termination!
Counsel Davis moves termination, Counsel Long seconds it, all those in favor, poll is carried. Thank you. Thank you.